We'll start the workshop session and I'd ask the first baseball roll. Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Odenell? Patterson?
Here.
Richardson? Aaron Scott? Bill Scott?
Here.
Wankel?
Here.
Kormowski?
Here.
Williams? Mayor Isner?
Here.
City, Phil Beard?
Here.
Two items real quick before we get to Judy's presentation. Just wanted to, well, as Mayor Tenny used to say, what is the council's pleasure on this? We heard from Dr. Charles Sheaf last meeting in regards to a donation or some money towards the Jacksonville Promise. He emailed me back, have you heard anything there? And he thought there'd be a vote on the agenda? And I said, no, I hadn't heard anything back. And, you know, at the next meeting, did we want to put it on the agenda for a vote? Or did we just say, you know, we're not interested? I wasn't here for the presentation, but I know he solicited at least $5,000 and then, I think, $10,000 and so on to meet a matching grant from the Tracy Foundation, I believe. So, do you want him to come back at the next meeting? Or do you just want to reach out to the players yourself and kind of?
What was the reason we turned it down first time?
I don't think we ever turned it. I don't think we turned it down.
Never asked for money.
Originally, they wanted to.
Originally, they wanted a tax and we decided not to impose a sales tax.
It's my opinion that using city money for this is inappropriate. This is taxpayer money and there's plenty of taxpayer money that already goes to students in college through other grants and scholarships. I don't think it's appropriate if you're some city tax dollars.
So, I mean, is that consensus of the council? Or do you want to think about it for a couple of weeks and bring it back and build it up or down? Or?
I think it's a great program. I give the personal money to it. I don't know about public money. I think it does do good for Jacksonville.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's off. Obviously, it's an economic development booster for our town. And I think the reason is we wanted to be, have the city have some teeth in it.
So, how much money do we give to the CEO program?
A thousand dollars each year.
Because that's equivalent, I would see in terms of economic development, we give money to that. That's more of a school function, I think, than this. This is more economic development. We give a thousand dollars more, kind of CEO probably should do the same thing for this program.
I mean, you don't have to make the decision. I just, he reached out to me and.
Take care of the gambling, man.
I mean.
No gambling, man?
Nope.
No, I mean, where did the money for the work as CEO come from?
I think we just keep Kormowski.
They really eat down like that.
Yeah.
Get the whole council.
Just put it to a vote then at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
We have a procedure.
I just wanted to be able to come back to the doctor and say, hey, we're going to have a vote next meeting. And then, is that okay? Yeah, okay. The next item is, just to bring you up to date on some things that have been going on, I know a couple of meetings back, Joel Zirkle came in with a paragraph about the landfill. He's the engineer that came and spoke about the landfill. He is, Joel and Jeff Perselli have met with Illinois EPA. I had a productive meeting with Illinois EPA. There's some boxes that need to be checked in compliance that we need to take care of. But he's developing a plan on how we can close this landfill within this year with the help of the Illinois EPA and their recommendations. Unfortunately, there's going to probably be some money that we're going to have to use. We're going to try to use as much city help as far as internal workings of the utility department or the street department or various departments that should try to accommodate some of the veins. However, there may be some money that we'll have to bring in an outside vendor or contractor to facilitate this closure. But we don't have that money budgeted. It's kind of the same idea with the town or the Brooklyn Bridge that we brought to your attention last time. That needs to come down. And that item will be on the agenda at the next meeting to take that bridge out. But there's just, I'm going to be coming to you with probably some procurement money or asking to eventually, so we can close this landfill, so.
Would it be any cheaper to take the glassstone bridge out same time? Would you get a better deal?
I don't.
I think, didn't Jim Burke say that as long as it's up to get some sort of money, road money paid for?
I can, I can find out, though. I don't know. It certainly, the glassstone bridge certainly isn't where the person bridge is as far as.
But I see piles of dirt there and kids walking across it.
Yeah, it shouldn't be kept up as a pedestrian bike bridge. I mean, that pile of dirt needs to be taken care of. It looks pretty, pretty, pretty credit for those people in there.
Okay.
Travis and I both have complaints about. Travis and I both have complaints about the condition of the closure of the glassstone bridge without the dirt piled up there.
Yeah, I don't know what other options are to close a bridge and what you can use. I guess ultimately taking out the bridge is the best one, so.
Well, in the meantime, it'd be nice to have a place look better.
We can redo that. Maybe. All right, I'll get you on that.
Yeah, just have some sort of area to say that we can't go up there.
With that, Judy? Judy Ty with Jacksonville Main Street? You have the floor, Judy?
Oh, I'm actually here, wearing a different hat. I'm a little bit more with the Historic Preservation Commission here with Cindy Belkley. And I have found another typo in the letter that went out in your packet. So, I have a new copy to pass around. And then, to make sure that you all got something that looks like this in your packets, I have extra copies as well if you need those. The Historic Preservation Commission has for quite some time been working towards the development of a historic district downtown. And we are here tonight to inform you of our progress. The nomination has been approved tentatively by the state and it will go before review to the Illinois Historic Sites Advisory Council at the end of the month. And it's, it's part of the procedure that we would request a resolution of support for this from the city and send that in, you know, along with the National Register nomination. And then also to request that we do an overlay local landmarks district for the same area.
Don't we have to have a public meeting too?
We have those scheduled for June 13th here at City Hall. And one for National Register and one also for a local historic district.
So Judy, you said you already sent the nomination to the state?
They, the State Preservation Agency has reviewed it and approved it, given tentative approval for it to go towards, to the Illinois Historic Sites Advisory Council.
So that was something that your committee initiated?
Yes, we got a, actually got a certified local government grant through the state to do all the research and put the packet together. That was about an eighty-some page attachment that was supposed to go out to you guys. If you didn't get it, I can definitely email it all to you.
So the work that was done to now, is that something that the city council said to do or did it come before?
I think they were aware that we were applying for the grant and doing the work and doing the research to propose this. I don't recall. We're going to be signing forms.
The one thing you said that was kind of funny was that you already nominated it to the state and then you're asking for the city council to?
Well, the nomination form that will go into the National Park Service is what we have prepared.
Okay, so you said you sent something to the state and they were in a sense of the National Park Service?
That's the process for that.
When are you going to send out something to all the downtown businesses telling them about it?
This week. Yes.
And, and can they? Since the nomination's already made.
Well, there has been some alerts, we'd sent it out in our newsletter some time ago that we were working on this. I think we did that last year in one of the newsletters for the Main Street District. So, that would have covered everybody that's on the list. This district is considerably smaller than the Main Street District itself.
And that's something I see in the newsletter all the time. You have the Main Street news and you also have the, is it Historic Preservation news or what's usually in the newsletter?
Yeah, it's the Historic Preservation Commission's newsletter we partner so that everything goes out to everybody within the existing historic district and then also everybody that's within the Main Street District as well.
So how do I get on that family list? Since I'm in both and I've never seen this document.
You are on it. It goes out to you at your address. It should.
You get the newsletter off of history? So the historic?
I'll make sure that you do.
So the work's done so far is done by the Historic Commission?
Yes.
Who's on the commission?
Paul.
Oh, Bill Scott. Steve Harden, Mary Greenwood, Loretta Scheller.
Steve Pachtstadt.
Pat Kennedy.
Pat Kennedy.
Mary Greenwood. Jim Stollard.
What is the benefit of this?
The benefit of being a National Register, your particular building is too new to receive any benefit. But for the contributing structures, especially for larger projects, there's an opportunity for a 20% tax credit. So people that have a much larger project and it's going to take a lot more, there's a federal tax credit that they could take advantage of for commercial property that is rehabilitated in a preservation friendly way. So that's one advantage.
Are there others?
Absolutely. It also kind of provides a layer of protection so that the local landmark district in particular sort of protects you from any of your neighbors doing something really silly that would, would possibly reduce the value of your property.
Do you believe there are increased costs to the business owners?
No.
If you have to, if you have to replace a time period window with a time period window, that's not going to be an increased cost?
Not necessarily. We have, the commission has, has made a point of working with people in the existing district to try to come up with solutions to problems, projects that are satisfactory to both sides.
If you have a window from 1900, we don't expect you to go out and find glass from 1900. We just need something similar in character and style that is.
That looks appropriate.
The front side looking the same.
Right.
Really don't care about the back or really far down the sides.
And the interior of the building, we don't have any.
No, interior, you can do what you want.
Yeah. The only time that that ever comes into, anything additional comes in place, if you are trying to use the federal tax credits, then you would have to follow more of the federal rules. It's like any other kind of grant program that if you're using their benefit, then they have additional rules. But those aren't rules that we routinely force anybody to adhere to. Yeah.
Using Aldrin Patterson's example, so can you walk me, walk us through the process with the historical window? How would somebody replace that? Like what's, what's the process or the circuit?
Well, right now, the commission only reviews items that require a permit.
Okay.
So if that item does not require a permit, which it does now.
Let's just say it did.
Okay. Well, then, when you go to get your permit at the city, they have the commission sign a certificate of appropriateness. And for any of the projects that have a question, if it's a re-roofing, something like that, replace the similar materials, there's usually no real discussion about it. If somebody is doing a modification that's much more dramatic, we just ask to see it if it's appropriate and everybody's good with it. It goes through pretty quickly. If there's any questions, we, like I said, we try to work with the property owners to come up with a solution that fits both.
So using the current example, so let's say, again, you're using the window and you guys, the property owner says it's going to be way too expensive and you can't find a workaround, can you say no to the property owner that you can't do the work?
You can, but they also have recourse that if they don't like the commission's answer, they can always come to the city council and plead their case and then you guys can either vote one way or the other.
Is that a 50/50 vote or is that a super majority because it's overgrown?
It's just a simple majority. Have you ever had it happen?
No, we're just wondering.
Most of the time, 99% of the time, I think, we resolve issues.
So now you, you also said that there's additional federal regulations? So if this is under the federal regulations, would you have the same process for local control?
Well, if you were trying to, the additional federal regulations would only come in if you were trying to use the 20% tax credit. And then that is a.
Why wouldn't you? If that's the benefit of us having this in our community?
It's one of the benefits. Sometimes the paperwork can be incumbent, you know, upon a building owner, they may not want to go through that. Sometimes the size of the project doesn't merit getting, you know, going through that process because the state would send over someone to review and they usually don't mess with, with much smaller projects. That's an incentive for much larger scale projects. For example, if someone came in and wanted to redo the US Bank building, for example, that would come into play. The level of work that George Hamilton has done with his property, that would come into play.
Is that your, Dr., you going to show maps or something?
No.
So the district, are you talking about just downtown or what's going to be the new?
There's a copy of, in your packet, there should be.
We didn't get any. We didn't get that.
Oh, they were supposed to mail it out. I apologize.
Mr. Beard, Mayor Tenny, what are you working on this today? What have you learned?
What I was working on, there's two parts to this. There's a national historic district, which Judy has been talking about, that involves the tax credits and so forth. The overlay is the local historic district. And with that, it requires a nomination form, requires a few different things that we were working on today. The main thing I was working on today was, if you recall, we've got three properties in the proposed area that are in the process of demolition. And that process can be slowed down substantially. Once the, once the historic district is established, then there's a different set of rules. The way we have decided would be the best to handle those because I think the council is aware, it's the building next to the Big Brother's office. It's a house that needs to come down. And the two buildings on East Morgan that are in really bad shape that need to come down. Talking with Cindy by email and with Judy, what I had suggested was, on those three properties, while we still want them in the district, we don't want to be handcuffed in a demolition process that's coming up quickly. So we would go ahead and get a certificate of appropriateness for those, for demolition, before we ever establish the rest of the district. That was the main concern that Kelly and I had. One was that these three properties could not be delayed in demolition. And two, up until late this afternoon, and I was in the office for a while, I had not seen a copy of the list of owners. It's now been sent over to my office so we can get that form prepared. So the notices will go out to everyone probably tomorrow or Friday.
Yeah, this week.
This week, with the hearing scheduled for June 13th, which is well within the timeframe required by our ordinance. Those were the things I was working on today.
And I'm, I'm more concerned about handcuffing our business partners downtown than, than the city, you know? So, so we're worried about our three properties? I'm worried about all of the others because it's already difficult to, to revitalize a building down there. It's very expensive. As someone who's been in front of the Historic Preservation Commission multiple times on multiple projects, I've not had a project yet that you can meet all the government criteria to get the 20% tax rate. Five years ago, I understand from Alan, there wasn't anybody in the community that was even eligible for the tax rate because the criteria is so extensive. I, until we hear back from the businesses downtown, I, I don't support this at all. I love the idea of it, but I, it's just one more thing that we're tacking on to business owners that, that they don't need. It's not fair.
Now, I didn't bring my rain glasses, so I can't see the number, but the one building that we're trying to demolish is one of the historically contributing business or structures?
Yeah. They're listed as contributing or non-contributing by the level of historic elements that still remain?
Even though Kelly said he's worried about it falling in?
We did the same thing with the homeowners. I mean, you're not changing any of it. We doubled it in size.
You really are. You're making a very difficult of work.
No more than a homeowner, I'm positive.
It's just still the same process. You still have to get a building.
Correct.
And that's the only thing that they say.
It's hard enough to run a business without adding one more component for them. If we can't even get them parking in front of buildings, now we're going to tell them that you're in the historic district and you can't do construction, you can't do anything without going through these steps. I just don't support it at this time, based on my dealings with historic preservation, based on my personal feelings.
Well, I know Joyce Central with the jewelry store that she recently moved, went through the commission with all of her work because it is already in the historic district that we have. So, you know, we approved her signing and a new sign.
Everything.
I can't quite remember what else she did, but I think she did a window frame. And I think she was happy with the process and the amount of time it took to get everything done. And I don't think she felt unjustly displayed. I don't want to put words in her mouth, but.
How's it going to impact District 117? Because we have the bowl and their new headquarters.
They're not in the district. This is the map of the district and they're, the only thing that will be in the district will be the Savings Bank building. And.
The bowl is in the district.
Right, but aren't they going to?
In the historic district.
In the historic district now. It's not included in this.
Aren't they planning to do lots of restoration work on the new building they just bought?
On the Savings Bank building? I assume so. I don't know, but I think all of it is primarily interior work, which would not, they're not going to qualify for the tax credit, if you want, if you understand.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Well, Judy, I don't know the answer to this. On this thing that we got in the Main Street bulletin, second to the last bullet point for National Register Historic District, it says, "It does not require conformance to design guidelines or preservation standards when property is rehabilitated unless certain incentives, i.e. tax credits, are involved." So does that say then, if you don't want federal tax credits, you don't have to comply with any guidelines?
The federal guidelines.
Right, you, you still have to follow your city's building code.
Does that word a local?
Tom, that's where the difference is between.
Federal. So it puts you in a, puts you into a local then? Like windows and doors.
Well, no. The federal doesn't impose any building requirements at all unless you're going for the 20% tax.
Okay.
If you overlay with the local land historic district, that's what then implicates the Historic Preservation Commission and needing to get a certificate of appropriateness for certain things, major outside improvements. That comes with a local district designation, not with.
That's what we have now for residential and large footprint.
Yes.
And there's no way people can apply to be part of it as opposed to apply to be excluded from it?
Set of boundaries.
Mike, you've been talking to people all day about this. Do you have anything to say?
Well, that's our job as the council is to listen to people affected by this and make your decision based on that. So I think, I mean, loudly, we'll hear from all these property owners, I'm sure that they agree with this.
We had a large building on one of the camps that's here in town. They're going to remove a slight roof and they're going to go with a plastic look-alike. I mean, I think the Historic Commission, their goal is to keep things looking historic. And if there's a way to do it, plastic, whatever, metal, if it's a look-alike, they're for it.
Yeah, if things are compatible.
It's out there.
We really do try to work with property owners to find a good solution that does not significantly negatively impact our budget.
Aldrin Grogen?
Pat.
You have, feel miscovered by this, but how, how do you feel as a business owner?
Well, I'm a, I'm a preservationist, so I would never take out a big window and put in a small window. But some people aren't, aren't cut from that cloth and.
But do you think?
I think it's good in the long run. I think in the short term, there might be some pain. But I think in the long run, it's good for the community.
Would it increase the value of your properties or help keep the value up?
I don't know about that. I don't know if you're getting more rent out of it. I don't know. But I do think in the long run, it makes your community a better place for people drive through and pass through. And they see things are kept up to, to some level of care, which would be a historic preservation. Because we have what we have. We tore a lot down, but we have what we have. It's nice to keep them in that condition. But minus one guy's opinion.
I think that's absolutely great. My concern is the building next to it that's sitting empty and the fear someone will have then to not take on a project because it's in historic preservation and they don't want to deal with all of that. So my concern is for the property that's already bad, not, not the nice stuff. Does it, like, stuff that's sitting empty and bad now? As an example, and I will say his name, Mr. Hayes bought a building that was disgusting and he's renovating it. And, and I understand he's, he feels he's getting a little bit of pressure from Historic Preservation for a building that was.
And I don't know where he's getting that because I have not heard that within the meeting.
And right now, he'd be grandfathered in if he's building in that area.
I signed up on. The carousel building? The carousel building?
We've already, we've already signed up on everything that he's doing. And in fact, again, the work that he's doing very well may have qualified for a 20% tax credit because he is basically doing restorative work. They can only, they, they can't force you to put something there that isn't there. And he's, he's basically taking it back to a lot of its original elements and style and.
I do not want to speak for him, but he's one of the people that was complaining today about this, so.
Well, the Jacksonville High School apartment renovation back in the day was an example of a historic tax credit project.
The thing of it is, is once that's done, 25, 50 years down the road, this commission will try to keep that appearance. And if you don't have that in place, then they can do what they want to. Four more quadrants.
Yeah. I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Four more quadrants. Well, I think this would carry a lot more weight into work for the whole downtown renovation and your Main Street committee. But I'm not sure where all this fits in because you guys are already doing basically what you're saying and that's.
Well, Main Street and Historic Preservation are two separate issues.
I get that. But when you do renovate, someone does renovation downtown.
Already rules, you must have a brick facade, there are ordinances that cover Kelly Hall has in place already.
That's why downtown looks good. Or give me better each day.
And that's the nice thing about downtown, instead of having a faceless strip mall somewhere anywhere else in town, you have a nice downtown location.
And this helps to ensure that that character retain is, is retained. And this helps to ensure that that character is retained over time.
Which brings it back to, why does the committee feel strongly about buildings? What what so nothing's gonna change?
Well, yes, it can change. You take like 217 building, that's all a metal facade. You take the OLA Bank building, that's all facade. Whatever comes down, then you take those try to take those buildings and put them back to the way they were.
Sometimes those facades want to come down. But that's what Main Street has done to get you out.
Well, we have.
If those ever come down.
Main Street don't have that much bite.
Right. We just encourage it. We we've just it's it's been.
It's been encouraged.
This is more of a layer of protection so that if you have in fact done all of these good things to your building, and the person next door decides to cover it up with a material that or or do something, put a put a peaked roof on top of their flat roof building.
But they can't because of our present ordinances.
Yes, they can. There's nothing at this stage as far as design guidelines that the city has, for the most part, downtown. We've got building codes.
Right.
And a National Register designation is not gonna change that. Again, there's two separate steps. For the National Register, the only thing that is implicated is a 20% tax credit if you follow the rules. Other than that, there's nothing else that is gonna affect the downtown area in a negative way. The positive impact would be the signs you can put up part of the historic district and try and do that. The teeth come in if you then do the local district, which would then require any major work or renovation to go through the Historic Preservation Commission for the certificate of appropriateness to make sure it fits what you want, what presumably you want downtown from a historic perspective. And if it is in most cases 90, 95, I can remember a couple of times when they were not approved, but for the most part, these are approved and approved very quickly. If they are not approved, it's first appealed for basically a rehearing to the Historic Commission. If it's not still if it's still denied at that stage, then it comes to the council on a simple vote, up or down. You can overrule and let the owner do whatever they're proposing. So, again, the teeth comes in if you adopt the local district. The national district only has the benefit, not the burden, so to speak.
Judy, you tend to have your thumb on the downtown business owners. What are they saying? Do they want this?
Honestly, a lot of it thought that it already was a a historic district. I don't think I have not heard a lot of real negative feedback. I've had a lot of questions, and that's part of our job as as members of the commission to educate as to what things are and are not. I have had in the past, property owners say that they would have tried to take advantage of tax credits if those would have been available at the time that they were doing work.
And I think another point, too, is we're not gonna make anybody take their building back to what it was at 1890 or whatever, you know? I mean, we're working with the building as it is now, seeing what the property owner wants to do. And if it's keeping the historic character and the whole downtown district, then there's very little that we have said no to.
Right.
I mean, even in our historic district, we approve vinyl siding pretty regularly because we know those old houses, and appearance-wise, if they can duplicate it, and you can almost duplicate everything in vinyl anymore, it's fine, because the siding on these old houses are bad, and a lot of people can't afford to replace it.
We really do try to meet people where they are. And in several cases, we've offered solutions that have actually saved them money or that they have ended up being much happier with. It's it's not about telling people what color that they can or can't use. If somebody asks us a color opinion, we may encourage them one way or another. But it it's not as cumbersome as a lot of people tend to think. There are communities out there in the world that are very, very strict, you know, Colonial Williamsburg. That's not how our commission and our Historic Preservation District is handled.
And as far as windows goes, as long as we're keeping the same size of window, that doesn't require a permit. So, then that doesn't even come up before us, so the only thing is if you're enclosing a window, then that would come before us, but.
So, we take a pause.
But it would also go before.
Do you do a program?
There is no program. The programs.
That is a program.
That's them. Yeah, sorry.
Well, I'm just looking what we need. I mean, what are we looking for in this council blessing to move forward? I'd like to see if the meeting takes place on the 13th, the outcome of that before we.
I I think this is happening. Whether we blessed it or not, right? This is going.
The meeting on the 13th is an opportunity for the public. There will be a presentation at that meeting. Everybody's invited. And then afterwards, what this is about is is to request a resolution of support following that meeting.
So, I was trying to think of what the recent the TIP district projects were approved. So, we gave money to Hamilton's for their roof. Would that have changed anything with their roof project?
Not at all.
And then Hamilton's previously was considered.
Unless they wanted to build a peaked.
Batresses or something like that.
They were talking about previously about doing outdoor, like a rooftop garden. Would that have changed anything if they would have done that?
No, we probably would have worked with them to to try to encourage a design or a style that would enhance their building even better.
So, then we previously gave money to Ramble Camp for their building, I think, for exterior. That was basically just for doing brickwork, so that wouldn't have done anything to them. They might have got the 20% tax credit. That was like two years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, that would have that would have been great, because ultimately, we want to see buildings saved. And if if the work increases the life of the building, it's better to have the building there than not.
Then a tech point project next to your office on that wall over there?
Absolutely would have been approved.
They gotten 20% for that or no? Tax credit probably not.
I don't know. It depends on the scope of the project. You have to look at. You have to look at whether or not the the.
Michael Fear hasn't got any tax breaks for any of his.
Plus you're 25% to get 200% probably.
Michael Fear hasn't because the 20% mandates that it has to be commercial use, and his are all residential. And there's very few properties within the existing district that could take advantage of this. There was used to be a 10% tax credit for preservation-friendly work. I know Tom and several other property owners downtown have taken advantage of that, and that has been removed from the federal budget, and it's no longer an option for any property owners to use.
I guess I would like to second what Alderman Hopkins said. It'd be nice to have the public meeting before the city council does anything. And I also would like to second what Alderman Cook said, that we probably need to move on to the next topic.
Yeah.
I think that's fine. Wait until after the meeting.
It's not an action item tonight, anyway.
No, this was more than informative than the ask was gonna come.
It won't be at the next meeting. It'll be the last meeting.
It'll be the last meeting in June.
Well, I appreciate the information, and I say.
When's that meeting?
Pardon me, Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
6:00 p.m.?
Yes. 6:00 p.m. is the national part, and the the local part is at 6:30, and there'll be a slideshow.
All right. Committee reports. Public protection. Alderman Williams is not here, so it's Chief. We're gonna get some updates, Chief. Some stuff, please.
Yeah, I'm here.
Can I?
Yeah. Last time we met, I gave kind of a brief overview of what I would want to do with a couple of projects. The main project was through capital improvement that we submitted for the new squad car cameras and equipment to upgrade all the police cars and the server network within the police station. During that process, we discovered that there was some grant money out there that we could apply for. Finding out that this grant money was there and knowing that the other project that we had earmarked for next year, which was to update the three interview rooms of the Jacksonville Police Department to get them all on the same network, improve the camera quality, were compatible to the server that we're purchasing currently through the capital improvement grant. During that time, we found that we were awarded $45,555 through the camera grant. And I put some numbers together in the packet, if you'll see. I don't know if you have those numbers. But we started out with an original amount allocated through the camera grant of $120,000. After spending that money for what the original project we wanted to do after state bid, we came out with a surplus of $13,261.71 that we would have given back of the $120,000 by just doing the in-car camera project. So, if you take the the estimate or actually the proposal of $24,992.79 to upgrade all three interview rooms, including the licensing fees, would have put us over the $120,000 original budget by $11,731.81. However, by receiving the camera grant, we got $45,555. So, by doing both projects, adding in that money, we were able to save $33,823.92 under the original $120,000 allotted. So, we're gonna be giving back roughly $33,800, and we're able to do the second project that was gonna be put off until next year if you approve this tonight to reallocate those funds as a result of receiving the camera grant. Is there any questions for about the camera grant of the project?
We get to run up the numbers, because they're okay.
I have a fashion calculator.
Sounds good.
And on a side note, although I'd like to take all the credit for this, I wanted to let the council know that Rodney Cox, our deputy chief, was instrumental in getting a lot of these deadlines met, getting the paperwork put together, and presenting me with quotes and keeping up to speed with the vendors and getting this together. So, I wanted to give him a plug for a good job on on keeping this project on course for us. Thanks.
Got the. Others, thanks.
Still up to the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Officer Walnuts?
Yes, okay. So, the partnership with Mormon County Housing Authority, I had met with Judy, Linda Jones, sorry, Judy, Drew Jones. I met with Linda Jones, the supervisor for Housing Authority, because I knew that the school district was leaving the Walnut projects, and they're gonna be moving their location to the old district building. So, those buildings were gonna be left empty. And I remember back in the day, the police department had a substation down in the housing, and where the police officers would stop in routinely, open the door. The kids and people in the area could come and voice their concerns, or they could come, the kids could come just hang out with the police officers. So, Judy and I got or Linda and I got together, and we toured the facility. We came up with a location that would fit perfectly for us. It faces Walnut. It gives us parking in the main front lot. I've been working with Dan. We're putting together an MOU with the housing to, you know, basically say they agree to give us this building free of charge, and we agreed to collaborate with them on any project or problems or projects that are going on. And this is not gonna be a full-time staffed facility. It will be a place for officers who can stop in. The supervisors will have a key to the office. There'll be a sign out front that says Jacksonville Police Department Substation, and it'll either say officer on duty or off duty. Inside there, we plan on having some things for the kids to come in, you know, novelty items to give out, informational handouts, pamphlets, you know, if we have other items that we could hand out, or just a spot for the kids to stop in and see the officers and discuss things that are going on, so. Just wanted to bring that to the attention, that that's a project we're working on currently. If you guys concur on that, and that Dan and I have been working together to get the legalities sorted out.
Is that beneficial in the good old days?
Yes. It was it was beneficial, in fact, for the kids in that particular area. Underprivileged children, probably close to police officers. Police officers interact with them real well, I mean, even to the point that some of them get their gun belts all stored when they're trying to play the bashful. I mean, it was a good community relations project. So, you never have a full-time person down there. You can just stop in there periodically and just interact with the kids. I mean, with somebody that does, too, because we've got some older people down there that may have been anti-police and were that either. They just want to interact with them. I mentioned that there was one time I got, oh, we used to do that in the past. That was a good thing, so.
And we intend on using it coinciding with our boots-on-the-ground program as a stop-off point. So, when the guys are out walking the beat and doing the boots-on-the-ground, they have a place to stop in. The office that Linda is gonna allow us to use is air-conditioned, has a water fountain in it, has a restroom in it. So, it'll be somewhere where we can, you know, it's beneficial for us.
So, you expect to use the minibar parking a lot? Tell us what kind of improvements are needed out there?
Don, didn't we even have officers live in the facilities from time to time?
Once upon a time, yes, we had. An officer lived down there.
I remember when there was one in Bass and made a huge difference. It was a.
One of those places.
Go-to type situation, and a lot of things were dissolved before they ever got started.
The other thing, I just wanted, I was kind of looking for the council's consent to go ahead and continue marching forward with this project, and that it's not gonna cost the taxpayers any additional funds to operate this.
Good work.
Yeah, that's all.
Thanks, Chief. Good work. Number five, discuss promotions within the Jacksonville Fire Department. Chief Sills.
Four and five are tied together. The department received that Kershaw's notification of retirement for last shift date, the 23rd. So, both of those items are to make promotions within the department and hiring a replacement.
How's that? So, that's not isn't it? That doesn't have anything to do with the grant?
No.
What's the progress in the grant?
We just received our first payment of $31,981.51 yesterday.
Did you already hire three firefighters?
Three have been hired. They've been fully trained and in their office.
We had a gentleman in council one night.
So, the probationary husband, is that? Do we still have the one bonus one?
No.
Okay.
With her retirement, it won't be short.
So, you'll be coming back to hire another?
No, that's what you do. That's what we're asking for tonight is hire them. The reason is, when you're gonna hire one.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay, any questions? Utility, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item tonight, discuss wastewater treatment plant. Post-rose feasibility discharge optimism and facility plant project presented by Ben &amp; Associates.
We got Jack, please.
Shut the lights off for you real quick.
This PowerPoint presentation is basically, the sewer industry is facing some new challenges down the road. We will not be treating our sewers the same way in a few years as we do now because of the changes in what the EPA requires. So, we have to do these studies. We have a lot of infrastructure at the sewer plant that needs to be changed with these changes, plus a lot of infrastructure that is beyond its life expectancy. So, but we're like we brought to you before, we're trying to keep maintaining what we have, because we know the way we're gonna treat sewers is gonna change, and these pieces that we use now won't be feasible. But we're gonna spend the least amount of money we can to get to the point where we start treating it differently. But the EPA is pretty much in charge of that. The timeline is a few years out, but you have to start finding out, so.
I'm gonna try to interject a little bit here. Real quickly, Cameron Jones is gonna be a big part of the presentation tonight. He's one of our process engineers related to wastewater treatment. This is very much focused on wastewater treatment. Cameron's been directly involved in the design and planning of Phase. Cameron's been directly involved in the design and planning of Phase Two improvements at the Beardstown Santar district locally here, pretty close to eleven million dollars in improvements over a period of years. Cameron was also directly involved in the planning and design of a capital improvement program for thirty million dollars worth of improvements in Kentucky. We worked with Jim Haggerty, who works with our firm, has a specialty senior process person down there on the Kentucky project. We actually ended up designing a new regional wastewater treatment plant along with Jim Haggerty. Jim is actually, had planned to be here for the meeting when it was gonna be last night, but of course, we had their schedule for tonight for reasons that nobody wishes had to happen. But Jim actually has over thirty years of experience. He's actually done work in multiple states as well as actually lived and worked in Thailand for a while on wastewater treatments. So, and of course, we have Jamie Headen, the principal in charge of our water and wastewater, both directly involved in this project. And so tonight's presentation is to kind of introduce this subject that Jack just talked to you about.
We're gonna go through some of this fairly quickly, not to minimize any of it, but in the interest of time this evening. So if you have any questions as we go along, like normal, throw your hand up, holler out. We'll just briefly look at the history of the wastewater treatment plant, kind of go over the large components, kind of remind what the steps of the process of wastewater. And then the NPDES permit requirements, as Jack mentioned, there's a permit that says all the rules of how you can discharge waters that are treated into the state and those change every five years when the permit's being renewed. And we've been working with Jack over the last three to five years or so, kind of thinking about some of these changes related to phosphorus, ammonia, some of the other keywords that you'll hear. And we've been developing a larger data set to be able to have you guys ready to this point. And now there's a draft permit that we're getting ready to be issued probably in the next month or so. And that's really setting the requirements forward that we're looking at now. So facility planning and phosphorus reports are part of that. So we'll talk about how to implement that and take it from there. A little bit of history, started wastewater treatment in the early thirties and then constructed the existing plant here in nineteen seventy-one. Probably a lot of you remember the late eighties upgrades to the treatment plant, which kind of set the tone for where you are today regarding treatment. In the nineties, there was CSO facilities, combined sewer overflow. So when you have your normal plant flow coming in, that's normal sewage. When you have large combined sewers, you have enormous flows coming into the plant and the requirement to treat that is becoming more and more important. And then really in the two thousands, over the last fifteen years or so, it's been more kind of staying the same but sort of taking care of storm sewer separation projects out in the collection system and at the treatment plant, kind of keeping pace and replacing really what's needed to make sure we can comply with our permit requirements. Kind of what's our scorecard as far as capacity of the treatment plant? Right now, our average daily flow is around five MGD. We have a designed average flow of around seven and a half. So we're about sixty-eight percent capacity. There's some times when it's really dry. It will be about three million gallons per gallon of the plant. And then we can spike all the way up to thirteen, fourteen MGD. You can kind of see how throughout the year, it really varies a lot depending on wet weather flows. Generally speaking though, we're gonna, the average is somewhat trending down with the advent of the reduced flow toilets and the water conservation measures becoming more important to the average homeowner. The general residential flow is down, but also we've had, like with AC Humco and some of those, not just leave, but also try to have water conservation as more of a priority to reduce cause at their operations. So I'll let Cameron kind of go through the steps of the treatment process. So like Jamie said, I'm gonna walk you through the treatment plant as it is today and kind of try to explain what each process does. So pay attention to this map. I got all the numbers on there, stepping from one through eight, walking you through the treatment plant. Well, each slide will have a different number as we go across. So we start out in the headworks and the influent pumping. The existing influent comes through an outdoor screen, which they have problems with freezing sometimes in the winter, and it goes into a bucket on wheels and they roll it over to the solids handling room. They go up on the second floor with a hoist and then they dump it into the dumpster. So that's just the headworks. Then they pump it through an aerated grit chamber, which helps settle out the grit and it goes through a separator and into a dumpster. So that's the first part of the headworks. And over here, we have the solids handling building. So they go up here, dump on the second floor into the dumpster and then the grit comes into the dumpster there too. And this is the aerated grit removal system. Second, we go into the primary clarifier. It is a fairly large clarifier. So you can see up here, there's only one of them. And when they get large flows, it can fill up with sludge fairly quickly and it has, when I was there today, they had stuff floating on top that they'd had come down the collection system. So it's one primary that when it needs to be taken down to clean, they have to back up their sewer or figure out a way to bypass it. Secondary treatment is their aeration tanks. You currently have six of them, which is great because it gives us flexibility for future changes or different techniques. Got a picture of the aeration grid when they're headed down for cleaning and then picture of the top with all the air on. You can see it mixing real well. Then we go into final clarifiers. There's two final clarifiers and they were done in the eighty-eight expansion and they have some parts missing that have fallen off over the years that aren't necessarily important today, but may be in the future. And then the building in between is where the non-podable water pumping system is and all of the sludge pumping system for the post-aeration side of the treatment plant. And it pumps sludge from the bottom of the clarifiers back into the aeration tanks and then over to the sludge management system. Then next, we go to disinfection down here. We got chlorine gas in these buildings, in that building. And then we introduce the chlorine into those tanks and that gets contact with the bugs and kills everything before it gets sent to the creek. Then we go to the effluent pumps. When the creek is down, it gravity flows out to the creek. When the creek comes up, it closes the gate and then pump it out to the creek. Then we move on to the sludge management side, which is almost as big as the water side. We just went through the water side going out to the creek. Now we're gonna talk about all the sludge and all the stuff that we take out of the water. It's in very variable levels of age. And so this is where we had started looking at things. This is the non-podable pump system, sludge thickening for the waste activated sludge. See, it's overflowing because it has that much water coming in. And then this is the heat exchanger, the insulation falling out of it. The sludge thickening and pumping and heating system, the whole treatment plant site, all the buildings are heated on a hot water system that comes off of these digester. These digesters create gas and the gas is burned in some boilers, which both heat the digester again and heat the hot water system so that we can heat all the buildings. Currently, we're in the process of looking at how to get those off of that system because it's leaking pretty well and trying to make it more efficient. Also in there are pumps and thickeners to send it over to their sludge storage where they store for most of the year and then they send it to the farm fields to be land applied. Next, we're gonna talk about the CSO treatment train. We have some storage tanks and a big clarifier. And then from the clarifier, it goes up, it is, chlorine is introduced and it's sent to these contact tanks that were approved a few years back. And this is to try and bring primary treatment to that stormwater flow that we see peak flow on. So we talked about NPDES permit. Jack talked about new limits and new things and all this other stuff. So what is an NPDES permit? It's a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So it is a permit for your point in the stream and what can you put into that stream. So it's US EPA telling Illinois EPA what they need to regulate and the permit is how they regulate you. So every five years, they come out with a new permit and that new permit will take into account all of the things that have changed regulatorily wise in that time period and that's how they control what you do in your treatment plant. So new to this NPDES permit, we have a draft and there'll be a public notice draft coming out in the next month or two. And so these are some of the things that are in that draft permit. The dark, bold letters are the ones that are new to this permit and the thin letters are the ones that are just, they were in the permit before, but they are still going to cause you to do some sort of action. So we got changing their winter ammonia limit, still gonna be able to meet it with the existing treatment, but it reduced a little slightly. They've got new nickel limits, new zinc limits, both of which they've been meeting fine even though they didn't have a limit for. Changes to their reporting for their industrial users, toxicity testing, ONM plan. It's not something that the donor already have, just have to do a public hearing related to it. Sewer use ordinance review. They want you to review your ordinance every five years just so you're keeping it up to date with new, how people are treating their waste and all sorts of things like that. Some new post-construction monitoring requirements, an update to the CMOM plan. And then the bottom ones are the ones we're really gonna talk about in detail from here on out. We got a discharge optimization plan related to phosphorus and a feasibility study related to phosphorus. And then phosphorus limits that aren't going to be implemented today, but will be in the next ten to twenty years mattering on what kind of treatment process you use. And Cameron, this permit's not just picking on City of Jacksonville, right? There's many other communities in your same size that are getting a lot of the same requirements. Some has to do with the receiving stream, but generally speaking, broad brush, a lot of these requirements are coming down and they're issuing them kind of in waves over the next, what, few months or so? This winter, EPA decided that they were going to implement these permit limits, the last one I listed before. And they had decided that, but they had been holding all of the permits for all the people that discharged more than a million gallons for a good year, year and a half, two years. So they had, when they decided that they were gonna put that limit in, they had two hundred permits almost sitting on their desk waiting to be sent out. So everyone in that stack is getting that limit. It's just how quickly can they get it out the door? So this month, in May, they started sending those permits out. And when I talked to the regulator, he said, you're on the list, you're just not the first one on the list. So we'll be getting that permit here in June or July time period. But like I said, you're not alone. Everybody's getting this limit down here. And they're also getting these optimization plans and feasibility states. Now, the big boys, the really big treatment plants, already got these plans and studies and they're lax permit. It's now everybody in a million gallons and up are getting it. So the discharge optimization plan is looking at your entire system, collection, treatment, everything, and figuring out, okay, what can we do to your existing system to reduce phosphorus without costing you really any capital money? So it's going to your industrial, your commercial, your restaurants, your launderys and figuring out, okay, do they have a phosphorus load that they can reduce on their site before it gets to you? Is there something in your collection system somewhere that is giving you phosphorus that you didn't know about that you can reduce it there? Is it something that you can just turn off and turn something else on in your existing treatment plant that you weren't doing before and operated a little differently? Or was there an entire process in your treatment plant that you weren't using? That's what the optimization plan is looking at. And then once you identify those things, okay, what limits do you have to give your customers to make sure they're not giving you high loads? Or a number of other things as you go down the list. So that's what the optimization plan is looking at. What can you do with what you have? Then the feasibility study is saying, okay, if day one, we gave you a one milligram per liter limit or a point-five milligram per liter limit or a point-one milligram per liter limit, it's a big difference between those, what would you have to do in capital costs to your existing treatment plant or system now? So if you were to, I'll go through in a minute what each of those treatment processes might look like, but it's more of a, how much is it gonna cost? How much time do you need to do it? You're gonna do it kind of thing. But just tell us how much time you need. So then the phosphorus limit is where they kind of skipped this step and said, okay, never mind, you're all gonna get a point-five. But matter in which process you decide to use and which one fits in your existing treatment plant, foot plan or capital expense, what time period are you gonna have to do? And these dates might be subject to change in the next permit cycle, but at this point, that's the numbers we're sticking with. So figuring out those in this study is where we're trying to get to. So why do we have this phosphorus limit? Phosphorus, everything wants phosphorus to grow. It's in your DNA, it's in your bones, it's in plants, it's in meat, it's in all sorts of things. But algae loves it. And if you get algae in your stream, algae takes all the oxygen out of your stream and all your fish die. So that, one of the problems we're running into. So it can impair the stream you're going into, it can impair the rivers you're going into. But the major one that has really gotten national attention is Gulf of Mexico Dead Zone down here, south of Louisiana. It's a five-thousand-square-mile area where there's almost zero oxygen in the water. And so nothing's living there. There's giant algae blooms and they're having a real issue. It's because all the nitrogen and phosphorus coming off farm fields and treatment plants and everywhere and anywhere going into the Mississippi River and coming out and floating through the Gulf. So that's what they're trying to reduce and farm fields are harder to regulate than you are. So that's why you're getting a pretty low limit right now and other people are getting even lower limits. So phosphorus in your customers, where is it found? It's in fertilizers, it's in meat, vegetables, all these different things that are growing because it bonds with different things to grow. So it bonds with calcium to help grow in your bones and things like that. So it's not something you easily, just doesn't come in anymore. So when we're looking at removal techniques, we got three main removal techniques. If we're looking at a one milligram per liter, we'll probably look at a biological removal. Now, with a biological removal, you're trying to make the bugs happy so they eat more phosphorus. Really, you're trying to starve them so they eat more phosphorus, but it's in details. So biological is great. It doesn't cost you much. You just kind of change how you're running your tanks. Chemical is where it starts, you know, adding up quickly. Chemical's point-five. Not saying you can't get biological to come down to point-five, but that's more of a site-specific kind of deal. But when you get into chemical, you're adding chemical to settle out the phosphorus and you're taking your sludge production, multiplying it by four. But you already have more sludge than you know what to deal with, so take it times four and definitely not gonna know what to deal with it. So as little chemical as you can do, the better, but the lower the limit gets, the more chemical you have to add. And then when you get down to a point-one, you're looking at micron-level results. So you have to put in filters with the chemical in front of it after you've already done all the other processes and filter that water down before it goes to the creek. And to put it in context with what the phosphorus levels are at the plant now, you're anywhere in the range from two to eight milligrams per liter. And the new loading is, you know, trying to get down to one milligram per liter. So we currently are at the levels that are...
So we currently are at the levels that are, that are being required.
So, got a lot of things to cover in the facility plan, phosphorus foot studies. Um, through different, from data collection all the way to analysis. So just like any facility plan, it just involves a little more of the process modeling and the evaluation of inputs and collection. Now, schedule, we're looking at a schedule. So we're looking at a facility plan update in twenty nineteen with potential improvements in the twenty twenty to twenty thirty range shooting for that biological removal in date of twenty thirty for the phosphorus. So summary, we got equipment efficiencies at the wastewater treatment plant that mandate replacement. We didn't go a lot into the age in the presentation, as Jack covered. There's a lot of stuff that's getting to their, end of their useful life. And instead of replacing any kind, we're looking to replace in relation to what's coming. Uh, the challenge of the new permit requirements is great. So we're trying to study to make sure that we attack it the right way and we're not throwing money at bad things. Multiple long-term treatment options are needed in this evaluation and they all affect each other. So I can't go and replace the sludge system without having to factor in the phosphorus removal. And smart investment choices today equals lowest long-term costs, so.
I've seen stories about some towns doing, uh, artificial wetland.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's feasible or?
That, that is one of the options in, uh, the list of phosphorus removal techniques. Uh, the one drawback on the artificial wetlands is the, you know, the scale of it. To me, your treatment flow has to be very large. Um, it'll definitely be one that is evaluated in the process.
And it is used a lot by smaller or medium-sized communities, um, as an effective choice. But it will be evaluated as part of the study as well.
Yep.
I guess I can be, funding available for any of this?
Uh, yes, and that's an important point, that the action item that's on the city council's agenda is actually the facility planning process. We are only starting the facility plan, but they do very much have, uh, principal forgiveness and loan to slow somewhat similar to what you were using on other water system and wastewater system projects in the past.
I, I guess I gotta comment on the, on the facility plant question. First, the, the opening of the new drinking water plant was great. I loved Jack's speech. He did a really good job. Uh, and one of the things going back to the reason we had to do the drinking water plant was we had a flood. The existing sewer plant, so also in the flood, is in the flood planet, has, has levees around it. So how, how close was the sewer plant in terms of height or flooding to being impacted by that flood that, that took out the water plant? And how's that being handled in the facility planning process?
That'll be reviewed as part of the facility planning process, but if you remember, we actually made improvements to the entrance road as a result of that flood event. That certainly is the flood of record. But we'll take a look at the free board and make sure that it's an appropriate level of protection, Steve, to kind of address that concern.
Was it close before or?
It was close.
It was close.
Yes, it was.
And another part, you know, the sewer plant versus the water plant, if it floods, it's bad either way. Uh, the consequence of the flooding, can the sewer collection system and discharge, you know, system operate in a high water level as opposed to water plant where there was no water going to the system for a while? So it is very good to look at that. The effect of what happens to it might be slightly different, but that's still something we wanna take into account for sure.
Appreciate your time and apologize for the lame question.
Yeah.
Like, like, engineer, like.
Every day.
We'll get to this woman.
I think we should let it go. I feel bad for her. Hi, thank you for coming. We had some really basic questions for you, so tell us, just tell us about yourself and maybe there's something else.
I'm Andrew. I'm resident of Jacksonville. I've been trying since March or April, I've been emailing a couple people back and forth, trying to bring Healthy Kids series, race series to Jacksonville. Wanting permission to use community parks. It's, um, kids anywhere from pre-K to eighth grade. And pre-K would be running twenty-five yards and then fifty yards and then on up to the mile. And basically, they, the company, Healthy Kids Race Series is based out of Pennsylvania. And they're nonprofit, but I would be getting paid based on how many kids that I get involved with this series. Um, they do a background check on me. They also provide their own insurance, so.
You answered all of our questions. Good job.
If you get a chance, go on a Healthy Kids website. There's a lot of information, good information on that.
Well, I think that's where we started with all of our questions and the fact that, like, it's weird in Jacksonville, nobody even knows if you're from here. So, uh, for me, I didn't feel like we could endorse your program if we, we didn't even know who we were or what you were representing.
Right.
That's what I wanted.
This is brand new for me. My, my kids who are two and four ran it in Springfield and they're bringing in over a hundred kids. And, I mean, I don't really wanna go to Springfield and I could bring it to Jacksonville, not saying I'm gonna get over a hundred kids by any means, but I could at least bring from surrounding towns, you know, and then provide an opportunity for kids to get out and, you know, run and have fun.
Good luck.
I don't know if anyone else has read, the Morton County Health Department and the hospital has to do a, um, community health assessment. And one of the problems that they pointed out was childhood obesity. So he's doing something wonderful. It's probably something we should be having more programs to encourage youth to be more active.
You should put you in front of the hoop.
As long, you would just work with Adam as far as the location, then we're fine.
I've talked to him. We've established a, where I need to go and what I need to do and all that.
You're painting on the trees.
Yes. Yes.